All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight for this regular meeting with the Talalco City Council. The time is 7:04 on this Monday, June 2nd, 2018. So we're just about four minutes behind, and we'll begin with a roll call.
Counsel Long?
Here.
Counsel Collins?
Here.
Counsel Hires?
Here.
Counsel Bliss?
Here.
Counsel Moore?
Do we have Mr. -- excuse me, Charles Moore here with us tonight from Indian Baptist Church to give us our invitation. Oh, yeah, I saw you a moment ago, and I apologize. Would you come up to the podium and lead us, sir?
Yes. Precious Father, we give you thanks today. We ask Father God for your presence as we are here to make civil decisions, as we stand on the crest of the celebration of a nation that was built to celebrate you. We ask for wisdom, compassion, and humility as we make decisions that govern your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Can you turn to Julie for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
I felt a little silly earlier. I looked right at you, and it was like, "Is he here?" Oh, yes, he certainly is. So thank you for leading us in prayer. And we will now move to item number two, which is our public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The cumulative total of all comments from the public, I might see 15 minutes, will give preference to Talalco citizens. And any compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no action or discussion is permitted on the issuer topic raised by a speaker during the comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time? Seeing no hands going up, we'll move to item three, which is our consent agenda. Counselors, you know, these are there in groups together for unanimous consent, but you can remove an item if you so choose, or we'll just give it full, open consideration. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to request that we remove the May 29th minutes from the consent agenda.
We've got a removal of the May 29th consent agenda, but would you like to make a motion to approve the remainder of that consent agenda?
I would give a motion to approve the remainder.
We have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda with the removal of the May 29th minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Counsel Hires. Clerk, would you give us a roll call please?
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Collins?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
We will move on to announcements, presentations, and reports. I do not know what is wrong with my speaking ability this evening. We will start by recognizing the years of service for our June and July employees. We have Zach Fraser from the Fire Department, who I haven't seen in the crowd this evening. Oh, wow, okay. Apparently, I've got a blind spot in this angle. Zach, thank you for being with us now for five years. And we've got Trenton Boston from the Recreation Department, who's also been with us for five years. Nope, and -- no. And we've got Steve Young, 35 years in the Police Department. I think everybody knows he's back there. I didn't see him either. There is something clearly wrong with my vision at this angle, but -- so thank you all, thank you gentlemen, for being with us for such a long period of time and doing such a great service for the people of Talalco. Then we have a report from the library. It don't seem as moody, but I'm not going to, like, stake my life on that, since I've missed three people in the audience already. She has no step forward. And the CBB and the Chamber, are you all going to make separate reports? Or -- okay, then Cindy, come on up and give us the Chamber report first, and then we'll be wanting Mercedes from CBB.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's a new fiscal year, which I'm very excited about. It's now all my mistakes, so does someone else's. So a new budget year and a new strategic plan that we have put in place. But first, I want to say we appreciate the partnership we have with the city, and we really look forward to advancing that partnership in the future. A few ways that we will be doing that is initiating a small business resource center, also establishing a Legislative Affairs Committee, once again, an Economic Development Committee. We will continue to advance tourism, we'll show breadth of the Chamber, and developing new programming for our business members, and hoping to just make us a stronger Chamber Commerce and Tourism Council. At this time, I'm going to be inviting Mercedes up here in just a moment, that I want to share with you all that four and a half months ago, when I came on board, we lost our Tourism Director the same day I came on board. And Mercedes had graciously stepped in after serving the Chamber as Marketing Court Director for a while. And she basically has done an outstanding job, just stepping in and doing the work we need her to do and bringing new ideas. And unfortunately, she is leaving us. We knew that when we moved her into that position. She is heading to Norman with her husband as he continues his education. And she -- everything's falling in place for them, with a new home, new job for Mercedes, and so we will definitely miss her and what she has brought to the table for the Tourism Department. She is one of the best I have ever worked with in my career, so I'm very sad to be losing her. So with that being said, we are in the process of hiring. We hope to have an announcement within the next week or two of who that person is. Just have to go through a few processes within the office, and so we will share that information with you all at the next meeting when we make that decision. So at this time, I want to turn this over to Mercedes and let her bring you all up to date on Bassmaster and the impact it's going to have on our community in a couple of weeks.
I have two quick questions.
Yes.
Two quick questions. Who is the current Chair of the Economic Development Committee? And, excuse me, you mentioned Legislative Affairs. Do you have a new chair for that committee?
Not yet. Reske and I just -- our Chairman just met today to kind of go over all of that, so that should be in place by next week.
By tomorrow?
Sure. So until we make that announcement, I think through the Board end of this month, but I'm going to bring my report back to you all, you know.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present tonight, and really what I want to cover is Bassmaster. We are three weeks out, a little bit under three weeks. Three weeks from now, we will be in Norris Park welcoming the Anglers and getting to interact with them and uniting the community through that first initial event to kick off that event as a whole. So we've really been working, and I would say a good portion of our time has been spent working on finalizing some details. We've been in contact with our Bassmaster representative every week on the phone and through emails every single day to make it the best that it can be. So we're working on finalizing last-minute sponsorships. Still have a few things that we're working on getting some sponsorships to make that work out. The event of the week will consist of a meet and greet on Tuesday in Norris Park. We wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to get the Anglers off-campus and into the community and into downtown, families and spectators who are here for that event. But I'll give them an opportunity to see our downtown, some of the shops and restaurants, and hopefully encourage some local spending that night. They'll have a sponsor night just for the Anglers, the banquet night just for the Anglers, and then Thursday, we'll go into competition. They're going to launch from Cherokee Landing. They'll be out there all day, and then a Fan Expo will be on in and she's campus in the afternoon with weigh-ins each of those three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then in addition, on our part, we decided to -- we're going to have another Friday evening in Norris Park, another opportunity for those individuals who will not be competing on the last day on Saturday, to kind of let loose and enjoy the community and celebrate the event. Hopefully, the community will come out and be supportive of that. It's a good opportunity to bridge between the event and the Anglers and the community, or so in a fun way and not too serious, but just to enjoy the community. And it's an opportunity for us to be hospitable and show what we love about Talalco and invite those visitors who are here to come back in the future. And then Saturday will wrap up. So really, we're excited to gauge the economic impact that will have on us as a community. And once we're able to do that, we want this to be an experience that is good for Bassmaster, good for the community, and good for everyone visiting, so that hopefully in the future we have the opportunity to bring back, if it's not the championship, at least one of their tournaments that is a qualifier during the season, and maintain that relationship and continue to have a positive impact for the community. So I appreciate the city's support as we move forward in making this event possible for the community, and we're going to be looking forward to it. Thank you, Charles.
Any questions of Mercedes before she runs away, almost time? How many Anglers do you expect?
We actually -- the first number they gave us, they said 90 teams, and the conversation I had with our representative last week, they now have 134 teams qualified. So that's two, so we're looking at about 270 Anglers, and they -- Bassmaster approximates four family members per Angler will attend, based on years past. So 268 Anglers, over 1,000 family members, and then spectators and community members that come out to support that event. So it's going to be big.
And it's on TV?
Yes. It will be broadcasted live on bassmaster.com during the event, and then ESPN also has crews that come in and film the entire week, and it's broadcasted at a later date as a whole as a recap on ESPN U. So it'll be broadcasted nationally. Thank you. Do you want to close?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Haley, you want to give us a report, or?
We can do it now, or we can wait till we?
Till the item comes up?
However you want to do it.
It's a -- if you want to give a report, go ahead and do it now.
This young man?
New guy?
New guy. Yep, the revolving door down at the Chamber. We really need to see Mercedes go, you know? Good fit, good person to work with, and just when you think it's all starting to meld together, then?
I think you're running the law.
She has to go.
You're running the law.
It's not?
Yeah.
Am I?
You are. You're the only one that's still there.
Was that a moment of reflection right there?
Well, sometimes, you know. You never know. For Main Street, things we've been focusing on here the last few months is our First Friday Events, which the next First Friday Event is coming up this coming Friday. It's a celebration of July the 4th, kind of an extension of that. So we plan to do a picnic in the park. The Police Department's going to be serving hot dogs and food as a fundraiser for the bike patrol, correct?
Correct.
Yes. We have a few food vendors coming in this month, which we've worked with through the city to facilitate that, make sure we're doing it right. They're filling out itinerary vendor forms, make sure we're collecting sales tax, make sure they're good with the Health Department, and they're insured. So we have a few coming in there. You don't realize there's so many around, but how hard it is. They're all of them are booked up, you know? So hopefully, we'll start working on them for next year, so we can have some more come in next year. Plus, it is open for artists, makers, and growers. So we're looking for other vendors that are either one of those three. They're either making something that all has to be homemade, or handmade, or homegrown to get a spot. So we're hoping that's going to be one thing that's going to bring that excitement to the street, and of course, it'll bring people to downtown. The other event we're doing during that, the First Friday, is the Scavenger Hunt, and it's done with an app. It's not going to be easy, I can promise you that. Only 100 players can play. So you need to get down to one of those stores. They have invitations, so if you want to play. And you'll load the app on your phone, and it'll start 8 o'clock Friday morning and end at 11:59 PM Friday night. And the one that completes, hopefully, somebody will complete all of it. I'm trying to make it where there's no way you can complete it all. But if you can complete it all, they'll win $500 in Main Street money. And we do give Main Street money, because that money goes right back to downtown. The app is on Scavify, or you can go to talalcomainstreet.com and find all the information you need to know about that. There's music, there's buskers, the River's Edge Band will be playing in the park that evening. Scavenger Hunt, probably good stuff. Something else that we've been working on is an event. It had a different name at one time, and it's been changed to the Big Idea. It is a micro grant fund that people will submit their ideas to Main Street. The committee will pick the top five. We're working on building a fund that hopefully it's going to be somewhere around $5,000-plus that the winner will be able to fund their project. So the way it works is you get your idea in, you get in the top five, and then we have a dinner, and they present to a crowd of people, and the crowd votes. And whoever gets selected wins the grant. And then that are the big things. The next thing, of course, is what we've got coming up. Oh, wait a minute, hang on. We have become the barbershop capital of the world. Another one has opened up. I don't know what the deal is.
Since this came out, I don't know.
Did you start this?
Everybody's going to shave.
Yep, I think we -- so we have another barbershop that has opened. It's right -- it's in one of the buildings that Cooks and Panning was in.
Can you get us some Mexican red bull?
You don't pose that danger.
As a matter of fact, there is one coming.
Where?
There is one.
Barber hair.
To the -- I think there's one coming to the old Burnins.
Really?
Yep. So there you go. You asked, and you did. Occupancy rates, it hasn't changed all that much. We're still about 88% occupied. Got a few for sale, a few for rent. Some of them are still vacant, but that's the good news. It's when someone leaves, there's usually one right behind them. What else did I have here? I had our -- I put it in your packet. The -- here we go. Just to go over a little bit of our reinvestment dollars that Main Street has brought in over the years. I think this is in your packet. This piece right here. So since 2003, the software renovations, there's been 29, but you can read this, $782,000 in software renovations, $9 million in private projects, $7 million in buildings sold, 7.7 for a total private sector reinvestment of $18 million. And this has been since 2003. We keep -- this is a report we turn in to the state every month, and then it goes on over to show what has been done publicly for a total of $20 million over the last 15 years. And I did have a -- I don't know if I got it in mine or not, but I also included in your packet the volunteer hours.
Props to Jodeen Worth, for her being another outstanding woman.
Yeah, Jodeen Worth.
Jodeen's a rock star.
So?
No question.
Any questions?
The Main Street Economic Vitality was on page two of what you gave us. Am I reading this right? You're looking at 180 businesses within your corridor?
Yes, 180 properties.
So is that -- so your corridor, what is your corridor? It's college to water? So?
Chickasaw.
Chickasaw, or?
To go.
To go into that, too.
And we're getting ready to ask that corridor be extended to include the Cassin area. We could just be a little dip there on the corridor.
Who has to have heard that drill from the city?
Yes, well, we -- the Board has approved to submit it, and they just really have to accept it. They want to make sure, I mean, it's a -- has some historic significance.
Well, that's also defined by ordinance, too. I mean, that's in code, that corridor.
The corridor is?
It's defined as a signed ordinance.
Is that where it is? Okay. And so it might not be as lockbox effect is -- or yeah, it may not have much effect on Main Street, but certain?
It does with their awnings and their overhang.
Okay.
They either play by the rules and that.
In that corridor.
Sure, is Oklahoma Main Street Association a Department of the Oklahoma Department of Commerce?
It is.
Well, 180 businesses. I didn't realize in that Main Street corridor there were 180 businesses. Now that I'm thinking about it in my head, I mean, that makes sense. But I mean, I think that's a pretty great number. I mean, 180, out of 180 businesses, you've only got -- there's only 23 that are, you know, vacant or needing. It looks like they fluctuate back and forth to where it really goes down to 20, right, consistently.
Yeah, and some of those are even off Muskogee Avenue. I mean, you really look at Muskogee Avenue, and there's, I mean, Foster Renters.
Right, and then if you pull that back, I mean, we all know that some of them are just never going to rent or sell because of the people that?
Someday.
Oh, then.
Someday.
Or that have always just kind of set vacant.
Yeah.
And whatnot. I think that speaks to the health of our Main Street and the work that you all are doing.
And one other, yeah, that's kind of my own comment here, it's like 11 total projects in the year 2017, essentially, correct? Is that what that number reads here on this sheet? Am I reading your sheet correctly? Public improvements, number of projects, end of year 2017, 11 of them took place that year?
That would be the 11 plus -- because, you know, those are big projects. Those are like the streetscape, the pavilion. And a lot of this was done before my time. So the 11 projects are actually 11 projects for?
That are?
Since 2003.
From 2003, going back to all what you're calling streetscape and all those, and the lining and everything?
Right.
Okay, got you.
That necessarily would encompass the skate park, for instance?
Correct.
In the Main Street corridor.
Correct.
So even the trail, to some extent, probably wouldn't be a portion of what you have.
Right, and I can't speak before 2010, or 11, actually. So I don't know. I'm in Norris Park. I'm sure all that was recorded at some time.
What about the Peace Pavilion? Does that fall outside?
That's outside.
It's across, that's all the way across.
But the renovation to the Catho Pavilion is definitely inside.
Do you know what they're doing?
They're putting in a museum.
But what are they doing in the ground?
That's geothermal.
Geothermal, so they don't have to listen to the noises and stuff, the condensers and?
Because evidently, there's going to be pieces from the Smithsonian there, and they do not, they have to be, they have to be very well controlled.
So not on my earthquake? Not going that deep?
No, no, I think we're all right.
Wow, that's hard for us.
It takes, must take a lot of holes to air-condition that building, because they just keep driving.
Any other questions, Drew?
Any other.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Take a minute.
Got a written report from the Street Department. We've got a couple of other departments sitting around. Chief Keane, do you want to say anything?
Yes, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
First, with years of service, certainly, so? Yes. I'd like to, no offense, but with Steve Young, 35 years, I would like to personally present that to him. That's quite an accomplishment. Steve, if you'd come up, please?
Okay.
So we're going to hopefully take away?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, James. Awesome. I'll run of the mill, Rick.
Now, Steve Young has, he was a, my sergeant on day shift when I was a roof control, and he's someone that, he was actually within the last month with our, he's our current Chamber Commerce Officer. He's a man that, first, I'm honored to have been able to promote him to captain. He was a sergeant when I became chief. He's one of the short list that I consider a mentor in my law enforcement career, not just law enforcement, but even as a human being. He is a -- pardon me. He's a wonderful role model to have, and he makes great contributions to the police department, to the city of Talalco, and has for over three decades. Started as a teenager through the Cherokee Nation Summer Youth Program as a dispatcher and dog catcher. You know, he's forgotten more about law enforcement than probably I'll ever know. Not only that, but he's an outstanding husband, father, and friend, and I think he deserves a round of applause for his wonderful life.
Wait, take it. I've still got to. He even, like, built your spot for a brief period there.
He was in through Chupi for a while. Don't really have anything to report, but do have something that we need to start considering. I discussed it with Quinn a little bit today. We've been talking about quite a bit at the Police Department over the last couple of weeks, and that's a rise in our vagrancy in the city of Talalco. Right now, we don't really have an ordinance that fits that well. Need to get with Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Baker, to start working on that. But we have seen a drastic increase in vagrancy in Norris Park, in City Park, the new Peace Pavilion that the nation has just built, pretty much anywhere somebody can lay their head. The issue we're running into is arresting people for that. Does that really fix a problem? It doesn't, and that's really our purpose in law enforcement, is to prevent reoccurrence of problems of crime. With the heat index like it is right now, quite a few of these people would almost voluntarily come to jail if they could, air-conditioning, meals, this and that. So actually telling someone, "You can't do in the park, or we're going to arrest you for vagrancy," isn't going to deter them, because with our heat index at 105, they're going to run to the park and wave at us when we drive by. But we really need to, as a city, I think, but we need to start getting a plan together. Right now, we've really been beating our heads against the wall, because if you go to the City Park during the daytime, you won't see citizens. You don't see kids playing swing sets on the merry-go-round going down the slide. What you see are people that are sleeping on benches or underneath the pavilion that don't have anywhere else to go. They're waiting on the soup kitchen open, or they're waiting on the splash pad to turn on so they can wash off for the day. These are people that don't have the means currently to get on their feet. And so as a city, I think we're going to need to address it, because just this week, we've got parks employees calling us to come to Norris Park to get people out of Norris Park that are sleeping on the benches in Norris Park. Now, every week, other cities are bringing their homeless to Talalco and dropping them off. Police Departments, Sheriff Departments are driving them here and turning them out, because we have a meal program for those people. We have medical facilities here, and basically within a half-mile square, a half-mile radius of downtown, these folks have everything they need to survive. They have food, they have water, shelter, whether it's theirs or not, and then they have Dollar General, Family Dollar, where they can go do their shopping with what little money they have. So as a group, as a city, we really, I think, need to put our heads together and come up with some sort of plan to help address this, to help these people get back on their feet or relocate to their hometowns. If they're, a lot of these people don't want to be here. It's that they don't have a means to get back to where they came from. They were unfortunately brought here, or strongly urged to get in the car, "Let's go, we'll go to Talalco. They've got food there for you." So just something to think about in the coming months, because I don't see it getting less. I see it's going to grow more and more. Like I said, City Park during the daytime is not a place, if I had small children, where I'd want them to play. And it's not that these people are committing crimes, per se, it's just, it's not the look or the feel that I would want to take my kids to during the daytime. So just something to think about. Have any questions, comments, concerns about it? I'd be happy to field them from Counsel or the crowd you'd want.
Chief, you might reach out to the Muskogee Police Chief, because I know that's something they can deal with there.
Muskogee's bringing theirs over here somewhere.
Well, we can.
So, yeah, Muskogee Gibson, Panida, I think is the furthest away that we've been told someone was brought by the Police Department.
We've been told someone was brought by the police department.
Counsel?
We are the MECA.
Any other questions, Chief Keane?
Thank you, for sure.
No problem.
Sure.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, counsel.
So, random gentleman, let's kind of give us a report really quickly.
I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Johnson, Director of planning and development. Happy to be with you. So I was going to put something over on the screens, but I guess Randy got the night off because we're not quite there yet. Then I realized, you know, this info, unless you have last year's to compare it with, it's just a bunch of numbers to look at. So I'll get you an updated info with last fiscal year's comparison. But I thought it was appropriate because we already have fiscal year to kind of wrap up what we did last year. Building permits, code enforcement, animal control, stormwater, and-- So you got that. You'll have to-- Hit me up later on that. Something else I wanted to update you on is our situation with town branch. If you haven't heard, there's been a situation with E. coli numbers being elevated above the state's limit for beach closure. And that's two-hundred-and-thirty-six colony-forming units is how that's classified. And last week, we had an event-- A storm event that we sampled on our-- We sample every third Wednesday of the month. And it just happened to be raining during our sampling event, and we had numbers that were shocking. As I mentioned, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-six is the limit. We had numbers of eleven thousand and ten thousand five hundred, and so our first hope was that they were wrong, but they weren't. We used accurate labs. We used them for a long time. They're a state-certified lab, and so they were actually certified numbers and we're confident that they're correct. There were actually-- A couple samples taken that were too numerous to count. So that is twenty thousand. Above twenty thousand is considered too numerous to count. So, you know, our number on goal now is find out the source of the problem and address it. So the steps we've taken is additional sampling. We've sampled pretty much every day since then. Luckily, we have some good partners in the Grand River Bay Authority, Northeastern State, and Cherokee Nation that have allowed us to use their labs for free to process new samples daily. So they're not state-certified labs, but they are a good indicator of the water quality. And so-- So far, it seems to coincide-- Coincide with the rainfall that we received. You know, as we get away from the rainfall events, the numbers, you know, they drop right on a curve with it. And so they are tied together somehow, and we keep working up closer and closer to the source, and we think we have some good solid leads. We have to do a little more investigation before we can actually point the finger. And so we're hoping we're getting there. Our last number was above the limit, so we, again, really had a press release advising people to not recreate our pre-cry. Chances are, you're safe if you don't have an open wound or you don't ingest the water, but our recommendation is to not recreate until we have better test results. Any questions about E. coli?
So is it my knee?
No. No, it's not. No. Chances are, it's a-- It's related to our sewer system or somebody's sewer system or something like that.
The search team needs to move out. We'll figure it out.
Mr. Johnson, anything else?
That's it. Unless you guys have any questions? I'll try to give you some numbers to kind of show last year, this year compared.
Tess, what do you got?
Oh. All right, what do you got?
Okay, so once you find the source of it, how long is it going to take to flush that out of the--
It depends what's got it. You know, if it's a leach field for septic tank or if it's a broken sewer line, it depends. If it's septic tank, it's going to be more extensive than fixing a sewer line, so.
But once the splinter is removed, so to speak, it usually-- I mean, it was a single source, so let's just imagine hypothetically. Once you get rid of that single source, it usually recovers fairly quickly, right? If it's a moving body of water, and it can be a matter of hours for the dramatic improvement.
Right, and, you know, that's a good point. It is a moving body of water. The two-hundred-and-thirty-six limit by the state is beach closures for lakes, ponds. We've asked Oklahoma Water Resources Board and DQ for clarification on whether a creek or a river has that same limit. We haven't got an answer yet, so we're just going to presume that it does. Hopefully, get some lower numbers, identify causes and whatever.
No questions?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to give us numbers to compare to from last year?
For those that I just handed to you.
For those that I just handed to you. It would be interesting to all-- To see, and I don't know if you have-- Maybe through OMAC or something like that-- Also, how we're comparing to communities our size and the brochure that we have. You know, if we're looking-- If I'm looking at this right, I mean, it looks like commercial, we have eighteen between building and remodeling. New businesses and forty homes, meaning new construction and remodeling. I think that's a large growth rate for--
I-- Animals out there. Some of those releases are to the Humane Society and SPCA, so.
So Clint, they're taking those animals and dragging them to, like, Colorado?
Colorado and Chicago.
Where they need our animals.
That's where-- That's primarily where ours that are shipped off.
Sweetly held, ain't it?
That's good to-- It is absolutely stolen, you talk about.
Any other questions, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So we'll move along now to our regular session. Item number five is discussion of possible action on items removed from the sent agenda. There was one. We had a removal of the minutes from May 29th by Counselor Vaughn. Counselor, it's your report.
Um, my apologies. I think I sent an email a few weeks ago when I first looked at these, and I think I may have CC'd everybody but Deanna. So on page eight, after item six, we list where we went into that brief kind of session to figure out the legalities of the vote. And I think the vote, Counselor Combs-- I think you actually voted no on number seven, and so that should say no or nay or Counselor Combs on number seven. Yes, because he voted no, which then led to the recess. So does the recess need to be listed after number seven, Grant?
Yes, whatever took it in sequence. Correct.
Uh, yes, because I believe we just broke after we had the vote.
Correct. I think that's accurate.
So what we need to do is just approve the minutes with a motion reflecting the nay vote by Counselor Combs and resequencing the recess until after items-- Uh, after items seven, is that what you said?
Yes.
Counselors, unless there's an objection?
I guess I'll make my own motion to approve as I--
Well, actually, read just to clarify and say--
Okay.
If I may.
Yes.
I don't believe that vote you're referencing is reflected here. There's a vote for table in that issue that's reflected after the meeting. If you recall, I'm not going to speak on terms of my memory surgery, but there's a taken that it was ineffective because it wasn't a passed ordinance. And then we came back and it was really good table, and that's reflected here, some say.
Do you remember what you voted?
Oh, that is-- That is the-- That is the motion to table that was within us.
Right. See, there's just not one reflective of--
There's not one reflecting of the non-- Non-effective vote. Okay.
So technically, that is an accurate opinion.
Yeah, actually, I would argue then too that if it's such the motion to table, then we don't even need to resequence the recess.
Correct.
Okay, so--
I did vote to table it.
So we don't need to reference when he initially voted no?
Because it's a non-- I'm going--
Because it was not effective.
Is that number six should be no? No, there was actually-- That additional vote that didn't pass.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, just in my--
There's two, one that didn't pass. So then we came back after I examined that issue because he was-- Vote didn't pass when he voted to table it.
Okay.
That number seven, motion to table, is accurate as it is announced. Yeah, I think that looks right.
It's all for him.
Okay, sorry, I just read--
No, you're the attorney, I'm not.
So in other words, we may need to-- Would you like to rescind your--
Um, I would happily like to rescind my motion that we approve it as presented.
So we've got the minutes as presented up for approval, and we need, I guess, a motion then to go ahead and do that. Oh, well, I don't have that motion. She rescinded her motion changes. Should we make the same motion to approve as within a second from Counselor Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, you've got all that. Just go ahead and use the roll ball.
So do nothing, you said?
Do nothing.
You get it. Good job.
Yeah, we're accepting-- We're technically-- This is presented, yeah.
Ignore everything I just said. Good job.
Okay. Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six is discussion of possible action on executing 2018, 2019 for services of the Oklahoma Main Street Association. Counselor, it's a contract we execute every year. There were a couple of changes that were made this time, and Haley can probably do a pretty easy job of walking us through what was worked. Uh, I think you want to walk me up here, you can almost make a one-sentence explanation of first Fridays are being substituted for big gems. Is that right?
Big gems and--
Oh, uh--
I want to say-- I was like, it would be the--
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Uh, then there was one more thing added, which is the--
Community cleanup days?
No, the-- In putting the flags out every year, so we've taken on that task. We've got-- It's D under Article Two is-- We'll do five days a year. And--
Yeah, I think that we explicitly said give us the quarterly financials in--
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's in there too.
Otherwise, I think we're in pretty good shape. I think there was a question about golf cart insurance, but your event insurance will cover any liability that there are you cities would not, where it'll be on your back. And once that's clarified-- Or now that's clarified, I think we've got a-- For this contract.
Can I ask a question on page 21?
Go ahead, Counselor Vaughn.
I'm sorry. Grant, Article Eight remedies, it says a thirty-day written notice, and then Article Nine, insulation, says ten-day written notice?
They had mentioned before the meeting, and Grant advised that maybe we ask that eight be removed and then we resequence before signing.
Okay.
Yeah, because nine is actually clearer in the shorter timeframe. If that's what the time frame you all would like.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I caught the same thing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just-- When I read that, and of course, it was late, I just wanted to--
Yeah.
Just make sure I wasn't--
I was just taking Article Eight out and resequencing it the way you suggested.
Taylor, any problems?
We entertain a motion for that change to be made.
So just to clarify, the motion is to remove everything under Article Eight, so Article Eight with the sub one, two, three, four, five?
Everything under Article Eight.
All right, well, then I will--
So Article Nine will become Article Eight?
We will resequence.
You're just checking over--
We'll--
Our label is moved up. Article Eight stays. No, I'm sorry. The current, as proposed, Article Eight.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve with the modification that we remove Article Eight as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Hires. Any questions or comments? Roll call police clerk.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Five days, I'm assuming-- Uh, you're very welcome. Sorry about that, stepped on me. Assuming Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July--
Pearl Harbor Day.
Pearl Harbor Day, Flag Day?
Flag Day. Correct. Well, the flags are up now, and they look great.
They do.
Just put them out for the whole--
Brand-new, crisp-looking flags. They've been used once before, right? I think--
Correct. Twice, actually.
Twice, okay, sorry.
We did get Pearl Harbor Day and the last year, I don't remember. Cut them a couple-- Couple times up.
Again? Um, yes, I was wondering why you hadn't-- Your body language was that you were staying, and I guess it's because-- Item number seven is discussion of possible action to approve a resolution supporting participation in the 2018, 2019 Oklahoma Main Street Center. I think the same resolutions each year. There's no changes to this document.
Correct.
Just a critical form of, but they needed in Oklahoma City.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
You may have a second to Counselor Vaughn's motion?
I have a question about--
Yes.
On the resolution, I just wanted to clarify that there will be a resolution number provided on that of today's date.
The resolution would have today's day, six-- Or, I'm sorry, now seven dash two dash eighteen, and I don't-- Are there any of the resolutions? Does that be it? Okay.
Second.
Second from Counselor Bliss. Roll call police clerk.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Another question?
Go ahead, sir.
Do you want me to provide a contract with that removed?
We can-- Well, do we have a digital copy? I didn't think about that.
And I have-- I'll do it tomorrow. We'll change the page down, and then I'll get it.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Item number eight is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1260-4-2018, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Five, flood damage prevention to include severability clause. Mr. Johnson?
So our regulatory agency that oversees our flood programs, Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and they conducted an audit of us, I believe, December or January, and they found that our ordinance was weaker than they'd like. It doesn't have a severability clause. So that means if any part of our ordinance is found unconstitutional, then having this clause keeps it all still in effect, even though that one part is found unconstitutional. It doesn't void the whole part. What is it? Twelve dash five two two. So--
Twelve dash five, actually.
Just five.
Really, we're adding something that a lot of other ordinances and pieces could already have.
Correct.
Uh, but we have to do it through an ordinance, and so this is the technically first reading,
But we have to do it through an ordinance, and so this is the technically first reading, and it's just a technical thing.
Yep.
And meet their criteria. And it was our only bad mark on the audit as well, so I thought we did pretty good.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Mr. Johnson, it's pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward. Many folks in Oklahoma City have it. That's right.
And protecting our ordinance as well.
Of course. So there's no action that is possible this evening on item number eight? Thank you, sir.
No, I'll bring it back on the regular meeting in August, August.
Police Department, we have City Minister Carr, Chief Keane, I was keen to come into the mic, just tell us a little about what you've got in mind.
Hi, I have a vacant sergeant slot within the police department. We would, I would like to recommend that we promote Patrolman Brian Qualls to the rank of sergeant at the current pay described in the collective party agreement between the City of Tallahassee and Fraternal Order of Police.
I will happily make a motion to approve.
Second, I just want to tell one very brief, three-sentence story. There was one time where we made an unusual request, Counselor Combs and I, to go tracing through the woods, and now Sergeant Quall, or presumably Sergeant Qualls, will be, he was kind enough to show up and go through the entire, it was quite a trek, and he and his dog, I can't remember the name.
Evo.
Evo. Evo, they were great, and so, I mean, if you all split this, I'm voting yes, just so you know. No kidding, I don't think it's going to be a problem, so.
I'm sure he is not tramps.
Okay, we, imagine whatever scenario...
Two people they have tramps, but I'm sure the police officer did not.
He made friends, and we're going to friends. He drove me and Counselor Combs on occasion, but we made it, so. Any other questions?
Who was the second?
Uh, Counsel, Counselor Bliss, yes, ma'am. Court call please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Mary, thanks, Counsel. Congratulations.
Right.
Item number ten is discussion of possible action to approve the best proposal for banking service with a definite transition date. Ms. Curtis?
Sunday, oh, bro. Everyone has received digital copies of the original documents as well as the revised documents from each one of the banks.
You're going to take pictures?
Not a lot has changed, other than the fact that interest rate was comparable to Bank First with Armstrong on the second. Second document, Armstrong still offers no fees, no ser, no charges whatsoever. Harvest is still the middle, Bank First is still the top. I think we're really to a point in my mind where we either decide to do something or we decide with the date definite to go back out for requests for proposals.
As I stated before, my feeling is that we write an RFP that fits the organization, we send it to every institute in town, not limit ourselves to three. I'm not opposed to shop...
We did send it to every institute in town and they were the only greater return.
But, but, but then again, my, my, having to rewrite the RFP, including the treasurer and the rest of us to fit the organization and not a cut and paste...
Can you get the treasurer to respond to me, sir? Because he has not.
Okay, well, again, that's what I would like to see done, so...
And we can, I mean, that's certainly a possibility, and then we'll try to see if we can get a response from the schools. Counselors, do you all have any other comments you'd like to make?
I think there's been plenty of due diligence done on this thing now. It hasn't been, our accounts haven't been put out for bids for ever. So I think it's in our own due diligence, the treasurer's own due diligence that this should be done. So either, you know, we need to do it what the counselor is requesting, or go ahead and go with what we're, we have before us now, because we have three that have responded in town, and everybody was notified.
Right.
But I think it's typical of those, of those three, I mean, we did the same thing in TPWA, and those three are the three that responded, we didn't have others in town responding, so I don't know if that's just, they're the three that can handle the business, or they're the three that are crazy enough to handle the business.
In this evening, I, you all get to drive this train, so whatever you all would like to do, and did you come in, probably at least in the form of a motion?
What's your recommendation?
You're way up in the spot. In my mind, the best proposal that has been presented?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that. You said Bank First is on top, and what do you mean by that?
Bank First is the highest.
Highest expense?
As far as expenses, yes.
Okay.
Well, when the president was here, he seemed to refute that.
I sent you the document that he sent in and, and, you know...
I think on paper, that's true, I think I remember, his statement was that they basically waived most of those, but that doesn't, is not reflected on the document admittedly, but, yeah.
So if Bank First is waiting on the fees, that's to say there's no fees, correct?
No, technically, if we were to have a change over within Bank First, we would be subject to the fees that are on paper.
Define changeover.
If there were a change in prison, change in policy, just for whatever reason, they decided, you know, that they needed to, no longer waive them.
Like if Mark retired? Mark retired?
And number seven, it's not a legal obligation for them to waive them, they're just doing a rockery, just because, by any time they get safer, however they want. We can also go anywhere else we want with our business too.
At any point in time, because there's no contract, and there's no ten- or thirty-day severability clause.
Correct. And, and... You guys could pick somebody today and come back next month with another, but I think the bank industry might get a little upset if you keep them there. And they've been, you know, a good partner to us for a very long time, and that's never come up in my knowledge, so.
They've never been, they've never been put out for bid either.
And that's true.
So we don't know what...
Well, it's been a very long time, yeah.
The only difference from my standpoint with the staff is that Armstrong is offering check, sick scanners, block bags, additional items that would make our daily jobs a little bit easier and a little bit more of a streamlined function, not just one.
Have you asked for that from Bank First?
Yes, they don't do that. I mean, they do have the services available, but we would have to buy the scanner and... I'm sorry, one more time, what kind of scanner? Check scanner?
Check scanner.
I'm not real sure how high the scanner is that they utilize, but they range in price from two eighty-nine to four twelve, just on a quick, quick search. Armstrong has offered to utilize one at each one of our sites if we want to. Correct, Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Shorten our time, make things a little easier, used on at, the University of Arkansas loved the process.
So just so I understand, because I worked in banking, but it was like, when I was in undergraduate college, so I think a few things have changed since the late nineties, you can correct me later if I'm, I'm wrong, so that would be like if I'm doing a point-of-sale and I write a check, and you'd automatically debit my account with my old-school check?
Yes, they take the, they take the check and turn it into a electronic ACH.
Right.
So it automatically takes it out immediately.
Right, so people who are attempting to float a check, old-school style, you're like, haha, we're going to still take your money right now.
Plus you get, you get the availability of funds right away, where they would normally wait till the end of the day to make their deposit, they get the availability of the funds right then soon to scan. So, uh, there's a few, few large institutions in town that use them, and, you know, they're great, we use them, all banks use them now, so you don't have to use to whenever the Fed would come around and pick up all the checks, not anymore, it's all scanned in, it's all electronic is scanned in, so it's the same type of scanner, exactly just like you, but the features of those things are, you know, endless, where you can see every check ever scanned by a certain individual. So, you know, stores it, stores it digitally, as long as you make a map for it, it'll always hold them in, and it'll move everything over to your accounting programs and systems and everything. And it's at zero cost.
I think you might have mentioned that a couple of times.
Just thought I had to throw that in.
I'm not sure. We can have Tom roll back that video.
So the TPWA, do they put these, theirs out for bid? How often?
Yearly, we may be putting out the account, all accounts, I mean, the checking account, all the way up to the savings accounts, three years.
How often do they actually change based on that information?
I know you're putting me on the spot.
I am.
I don't think in my, in the time I've been there, that it's changed, and I get to be before then, I don't know. It's been the same institutions since two thousand and six.
That would be you, right?
I can't legally say where it'd be at, but I can say it's been the same institutions since two thousand and six.
When I spoke with Gal, it was Armstrong.
That's weird, they can't say, we have to tell you, and it gets Armstrong, so, okay, yeah. Conscientiality. Yeah, well, we give them such a privilege, so. Well, I can put that. We voted on it.
Right.
I'm going to make the motion that we move the account to, the accounts to Armstrong and put it on an annual bid process.
Okay, we have a motion to move to Armstrong, and we, and that there is a process for annual bidding. Is there a second to Counselor Combs' motion? Do we have a second to Counselor Combs' motion?
I'll say again.
A second to Counselor Combs' motion?
So what's the RFP going to look like next year?
The, we'd settle that next year, I guess.
Okay.
But I can't answer that now. They're eleven months ahead of time, but...
It'd be nice to go forward with, with, you know, a document that we can maybe improve on over time and move forward and have everyone know what we're asking of them as far as institutions during this year, and we're being asked to make a decision with multi-million dollars with not very good information that we've been given, and there's nothing in this package, of course, we've been given everything, but it's inadequate at least. I want to clarify, you're wanting us to make that decision?
Well, it's in writing that...
I'm just, I'm just sitting here and that is Counselor Combs' motion, so...
No charge, it's, is in writing, the other one has fees in writing.
Did you read the RFP yet?
I've not, yes, I did read the RFP.
It seemed a little...
Not had everything listed out, what bill?
No, it seemed like it didn't fit our organization very well, yeah, it did have everything listed out, but although the services we were asking for is a multinational organization, and it not fit for municipality, so I don't understand.
Perhaps the land treasurer will need assistance.
It would be occasionally, a couple. Any other questions or comments?
The stop and assist that, that the treasurer gave, was that not addressed?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Was the stop and assist that the treasurer gave addressed? Or the cease and assist? I apologize for misspeaking.
No, he didn't have the authority to tell us to cease and assist, so we just, we went ahead with the Counselor Combs' request to make the, to issue the document, so.
I ask another question.
Yes, ma'am.
And Bobby, you might be the one who can answer this, so like, right now, like, for example, on our TTA audit, we have some money at Armstrong now and some money at Bank First, so are there any, like, do the FDIC limits apply at all?
Well, for the amount of money that you have, except speed limits doesn't really apply, due to the fact that we are, both institutions are purchasing Federal Home Loan Bank audit, or lines of credit, so you're back with the Federal Home Loan Bank.
Even separate from that, that's a completely separate legal entity.
Well, but, just for me to know, I mean, since we...
They're all purchased.
That money doesn't matter to, in a more technical sense, to those that deposit all.
Okay.
Yeah, we buy insurance from them, you know, for all, all institutions, all governments have to be backed by Federal Home Loan Bank securities or deposits thereof, so we get a FDIC, or we get a Federal Home Loan Bank letter of credit, which would be the same, and you have to keep it on, on hand at all times.
Right.
You guys got audited, oh, I think, three, two years ago, we actually had to turn in more documentation that had been lost or something, so we sent ours back in, but you get a report all the time on it.
Okay.
So it tells you what, you know, whether you have securities or whether you have Federal Home Loan Bank letters of credit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other final questions, comments from anyone? Seeing none, court gives a roll call.
Counselor Wong?
Upstaying.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
No.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Hires.
Is that recorded as a now that we're on stage?
That extension is recorded as a now vote, is it?
Oh, yeah, so it's out. No.
Motion denied.
Is there any other motion that you all would prefer to make this evening on that night?
So this is my question now that we've done this. Do we settle for the fiscal year, and now at the end of the next fiscal year, say, May, put out the RFP, RFP again? And so that gives us basically an entire year to settle an RFP, come up with an RFP, I mean...
I think it was.
Well, and then as the attorney mentioned earlier, I mean, it doesn't put an end to the issue by any means, it's just one of those things where we now have a chance to take a deep breath, and there's no impending change, and we can figure something out as we go forward. Any other desired actions this evening, Counsel? Okay? Yes, ma'am?
When you put out your request, do you consider going down and listing what you want in detail, that this is a requirement, that if you want scanners, they do scanners, and maybe that's the way you did it, I don't know, but that, then you're comparing apples to apples, if a bank can't provide what you require, they would tell you no. I mean, I worked in purchasing at Northeastern, and we listed what we wanted, and if they couldn't provide it, then that was part of the criteria for evaluating it.
We did the same.
Okay.
Yeah, we did the same. There was a little bit of, some things at the tail end that created some ambiguity for me, which is why on the spot I did what I did, but, but nonetheless, that is essentially the process we followed.
Well, and like on the, the fees, if they're going to, if they say they're going to do fees, you can't verbally come in and say, well, I'm going to waive them, that makes it, you know, it's not legal that way. But I just wondered how you handled it. Thank you.
And I think ultimately, that's why, you know, I didn't look at it until Grant said that tonight, but, you know, technically, even though it's being reimbursed at any point in time, that could stop with any hyperchange of Bank First, and they could read what I'm going to assume is going to be a newspaper article tomorrow, and Oklahoma City could say, no, we're not going to do that anymore, and so I think that's why I was comfortable, more comfortable moving on, but I would say that I don't want this to continue to be an issue, that we need to decide when we're going to put this out for bid, and then come back in bid. It doesn't need to be in three months, we decide to do it again, and then we get nowhere, and we drug all the banks back in and got nowhere, and then we decide again in six months to do it again, and then we drag, drive all the banks back in. For me, I mean, we need to decide, if it makes sense to do it now, it's the start of the fiscal year, so maybe it makes sense again to start it again the next fiscal year. But TPWA, we do it in May. So it's ready to start.
Well, I'd like to see the RFP before it goes out, as, as the WPA, I mean, to make sure that we're all okay with, with what we're asking. And I'm not opposed to changing banks, I'm opposed to the pretense under which we're doing it, and I just, I think it can be done cleaner, it can be done better, and if I can be of any help, please call me maybe at the board, Jason.
And then I think we also have to forgive over semantics, because I think that an RFP is different than a quote for professional services, and so, and I'm not like jabbing at you, I'm just saying, we need to understand what we're doing and what we're putting out. And I think for the city, there was a lot of, it wasn't confusion, but there was a lot of, we haven't bid our accounts, and so we didn't know necessarily what we were asking for, to say, hey, we need this and this and this. We knew what we were being offered, and so we, that was the knowledge that we had as the city, and then we put it out there, and then other banks came in and said, you know, this can be offered now, and they came in, so, I don't, we just need to clear that and get it done, maybe next year, we can put the, the quote out again.
TPWA has a very good RFP, it's all drawn in.
I found that we need a one minute.
We will borrow and compenpace, or light out still a thing, I'm not sure. If they don't show, if we run or TPWA, we don't get the RFP, it comes to us, the here of the bids.
Correct.
So.
Always be known with the...
We did, but we can...
And it's not in progress by any... Okay, we'll go to item eleven, which is discussion of possible action as needed regarding the instance Brandon Park, Counselor Wong.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I find it closely, there for a second. This will just take a few seconds, and I feel bad that poor Charles had to come down and work, I'm actually, I might give a couple, I'm going to give one of you down, too. I just wanted to update Counsel, I sent a bunch of emails to the counselors, and I just wanted to share some information. We do have our volunteers nailed down for the community build, our goal is to not get one and done, Thursday, July, I think you'll be there too? All right, we'll add number twenty, Counselor Combs will be added to the list of volunteers. We've got a lot of volunteers from Leadership Class Nineteen, which of course we were formed under the Chamber, we've got a few special guests from some other leadership classes. Of course, we've got Charles Potteed, our infamous Parks Department Director, and we adore, and a few of his staff members will also be there. adore, and a few of his staff members will also be there. Um, our goal is to be there and ready to start working at eight AM on July the fifth. Uh, we've got breakfast items that are going to be provided by CJ Jankus, water bottles provided by Cherokee Elder Care, lunch is going to be provided for volunteers by the five oh one C three, my friends and me, and I'm going to bring some other beverages. The Northeastern Health System EMTs, EMS Department, they're going to provide the misting tents, so that us folks that are white collar, who normally sit in a nice air-conditioned office all day long, won't hopefully die of heat stroke, so hopefully we can brave, brave the, the triple-digit heat index on Thursday. Um, we're also working with my friends and me to organize kind of like a grand opening community picnic event. Uh, we've tentatively set that date today, looking at our calendars, we were trying to do it before Keys and Talcott Public School, uh, start this year, which is really early this year, it seems like, compared to when I was a kid. Um, so tentatively, August seventh, from four to seven PM, we're going to work with the Chamber to try to do a ribbon cutting for the park, if that's okay with, um, the counselors up here at the, at the horseshoe. Um, the goal, and I've briefly spoken to Chief Hannans about cooking some hot dogs, and having the fire department on site, maybe bringing a fire truck for the kids to look at and enjoy. Uh, we've got some other businesses in town who've offered to do balloons and other items that the kids will hope to enjoy, and we have, um, I think I hit all my bullet points. And then, once again, a big thank you to Charles for all of his hard work, and if anybody wants to donate anything for that little community picnic event, we would love to have it. Is there anything else I need to think about, Mayor, that I haven't thought about from the city perspective?
Only that I can think of, I'd look at Charles and Mr. Carr, be sure, I'll probably come out and, and donate a little time, because I've had a couple of your volunteers invite me to, to, uh, tag along a little bit there and get involved, and so I'll probably end up making an appearance or two, and I'll try to help you all out, but otherwise, I can't think of anything. Nobody's responding like, oh, yeah, wait a minute, so I think we're okay, yeah.
And then the, uh, community picnic date is really the date we wanted to kind of invite a lot of our businesses who sponsor, uh, funds to the city to help build that park, so we want to invite those, and of course, a lot of the state representatives and our state senator, uh, chief, Chief Baker, several others that expressed interest in being at that ribbon cutting, since they did help to contribute to the project, so, and of course, we would notify the paper if they're available to attend, that would be great.
I would just like to say, I was out there Friday, and it is progressing along nicely. Um, it looks really good, and I'm proud of what, what that is going to be, and I think it is a jewel for our community, so, kudos to Mr. Potteed and all of his employees that have gotten us thus far, and I look forward to what's going to happen. A funny story, just something that we talked about the other day, my son, we were at the, at the water park, and he was like, I want to go play on that, and I was like, yeah, the new, the new playground, it'll be fun. He was like, no, I want to go play on that, and he was looking through the playground through the big pile of dirt. And we just see the wheels turning. So hopefully, at some point, that stoves him down.
That is the biggest attraction at the soccer fields, I know Grant and I watched some adults, actually, parents, play on the mound of dirt as well during several soccer games this last season.
But the playground is, is very nice, in very good condition, I believe.
Well, Mayor and Counselor Combs, I will happily add you to the volunteer list, so we can make sure to have some food for you guys to eat while you're there.
Water, thank you.
Water, lots of water, maybe some gatorade.
Any other comments, questions, and Ms. Law? It's a great project, been about four or five years in the conception, design, development, fundraising by New Jersey Nineteen, uh, it's just been a process, but we're almost there, so.
All right, one more thing, easy. Um, Fox Twenty Three has also been following my friends and me, and Nikki Von Scott, and kind of her path on her organization and the growth, and what she's done for youth in our community, so I think they will probably also be on site Thursday as well to do a continuation piece to the one they did approximately two years ago, when we're still at the coffee park.
Sounds good. I don't think any action is necessary, unless you all want to take some for some reason? Okay. Now moving to item twelve, presuming the sixteenth of July would be your preferred minimum meeting. I guess you could actually do it on the twenty-third if you prefer, because we have a five Monday month, is that right, Counselor? Sixteenth works?
Yes, five Monday.
We'll go with Counselor Combs' suggestion of July sixteen, and we will be back here at seven o'clock on that Monday night. I don't know of anything that would interfere. Plus, there's an objection. We'll go to item thirteen, which is to adjourn. Is there a motion? Someone?
Say again?
Uh, yeah, exactly. We'll give the motion to Counselor Combs, and the second to Counselor Hires, and then we'll go with that roll call police clerk.
Yeah, and he, he should have gotten that in. Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Law?
Counselor Law?
Yes. Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are adjourned.